We're going to call this meeting to order. This is a professional development meeting for the Board of Education on the cabinet tonight. Can we please rise for their presentations?
Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Could we have a motion to approve the agenda? The only item on the agenda is the Kate Lighthouse training.
So much.
Ms. Dayton, do you have a second? Dr. Francis, any discussion? All those in favor of approving the agenda? Seven zero, Mr. Scher absent. All right, with that, we're going to turn it over to our guests to add an introduction.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hi, Laurie.
Hey.
I needed my blankie.
Well, good evening. We're going to be starting a journey. In fact, I'll start with, there we go. We'll do some introductions so that everybody can hear some things about each other. The first module, and this is one of the things we're going to kind of have to probably come to an understanding this evening. The module probably would stretch longer than the evening would allow. So I'm thinking we get about halfway through it, continue it the next time, rather than try to cram a lot in because it's much more effective if you get time to talk to each other. And the only way we can get through the entire module is to cut that out, and that fills most of the value of this conversation. So if that's fine with you, that's how I'd like to proceed, that we don't lose sight of what we're trying to do here. Yes?
Can you be a very strict disciplinarian with timekeeping?
I would accept, this is kind of a conversation along the way.
Do you have a definite end time?
Yeah, I'd like to be out of here no later than nine, but I'm going to leave that to you folks when I see ice blazing over, probably closer to 8:30, but let's see how it goes. Let's go all the way back to Louisville tonight. So I'm not interested to say until 10:00 or 11:00 if I don't have to. Thank you. You will see in front of you, by the way, some little tent card things here and these markers. So Jennifer did that without direction, that's terrific, but if you write your name, and the other reason that can be helpful is then you can put it in your binder. And what most districts do is they collect the binders, keep them at central office, and then you've got them ready for the next meeting. Otherwise, people kind of forget. Oh, do you have an extra? No. And as I was saying, these are the last that we've got from here on, and we don't have any more from the state that are state-supported. So there's that. You'll also see some sticky notes, we'll be using them shortly, so don't fear those. And we also will be doing some podiums, so you'll see a little electronic response device in front of you. I'm trying to make this, you know, multi-dimensional, so that it isn't just a little boring stuff. This first module, we really have three outcomes that I'd like to see. We're going to focus tonight really most on developing a sense of urgency, and that's different in every community. We're going to talk a lot about your community tonight and what you see as the urgency. We'll also be talking about what's at stake if you can change. If you just go on the way you're going and don't make any changes, what happens? With changing demographics, et cetera, et cetera, you might go along fine for five, 10 years, or not, but, you know, sort of a reality check, what happens in school districts that don't look ahead? And then what's possible? You know, I think this is probably an area we can focus a little less on here, because you have figured out a lot of stuff. I looked through your strategic plan, I looked through your budget document, Ralph, you were right, that's really excellent work in drawing a picture of the community or telling a story.
Budget book, yes.
Yeah.
Thank you, Laurie.
Phenomenal. Really helping, it has to help your community understand what's going on a lot better. It really does. And it all really starts with the idea, if we don't have a sense of urgency, we're not going to have change. It really has to start, and not only do you need the sense of urgency, but you have to be able to communicate that well to the public. And one of our modules down the road is on community engagement and communication and such. So we'll not only talk about what the urgency is, but then how to get that story across Mr. Mayo insisted we should have meeting norms, and he's right. These are mine, but we can talk if anybody has something to listen here. Please do write your name on the tent card, I see people have done that, thank you. Cell phones on vibrate or off. Sorry about that. Please participate, and I would include members of the cabinet, please participate. This works best if everybody is part of the process and communicates. Respect each other. Please try to come to every meeting. Again, it's really tough, because this is group training, this is board leadership training. And if you miss something, it's really hard to catch back up, because we don't have the luxury of enough time to repeat ourselves every time we go. So, and we hit different areas. So if you can participate in all the sessions, you'll get the most value from it. You know, everybody has the opportunity, please agree to disagree, but not disagree with me. Hopefully, we don't have those kinds of conversations where people will feel the need to do that. We are going to talk about important issues, but not necessary, I hope they're not contentious issues. We'll see how that goes. That's when I guess I earn my pay, if you do. And then we'll try to stay focused, for no other reason than make sure Jennifer's pleased with that, because we're going to stay on topic. So introductions. They usually ask people what they would hope to get out of the session, but I was at a workshop last week, Kate and Capisco-sponsored training for board chairs and superintendents. And the facilitator asked a great question, and I'm going to start by asking all of you to respond to the same question. And the question basically is, with all of the competing interests, I mean, we are inundated with opportunities to do things. We have, you know, all kinds of volunteer organizations that need our help, charities, children that need help, whatever, there's more entertainment options than there used to, I mean, TV has 1,000 channels, for example, in the internet. So for you to devote the time that you do into the Board of Education, into public education, it has to, you have to be invested. And so I guess the question that I'm going to start with you, Megan, why is this what you decided to spend your time on? What is it about this work that compels you to want to do this rather than something else?
Being on the Board of Education, this particular treat. I mean, to me, I feel like it's a really easy answer, because I've devoted my life to education. So I have spent my entire adult life with students, and being able to now be a parent and see how all this plays out, and also a teacher in any of our districts, I'm passionate about it. And I have a very strong sense of urgency in a lot of these issues, and I agree that I think it's important to make positive change. So I put my heart and soul in it, so.
Great. Agreed.
So I'm not on the Board of Ed, you realize that we're part of the administration, yes. So in my whole career, once a former board member and also being an educator, I felt that this was an opportunity to make a difference in a child's life and with the way I grew up. So I still believe that I can make a difference in a child's life, and that's why I'm hearing this opportunity to come back.
Will you want to report a gratitude?
In there, I don't know.
Good. Thank you.
Growing up, I wanted to be a teacher, so I've always cared about education. I did a lot of adult training, so it's like, sort of similar, but it's just, you know, adults are kids in big bodies, is what I've always said. And I care about the well-being of children, I care deeply, not just the academic context to, you know, raising children, but a lot of the social and emotional aspects, and, you know, really trying to give the youth in our town the best start that they can get, is why I participate and volunteer my time.
Thank you.
On a more big-picture level, I do it because I think it's the foundation of democracy. I think it is the key to economic prosperity, and I think it is the only answer to social mobility. So for all of those big-picture reasons, I'm on the school board.
I heartily agree with Jennifer Dayton about the, is our school system being the foundation of our democracy, and without it, we're not going to be much of a democracy or a country anymore, without it. But to go further than that, I'm a product of the Grant Public Schools. I've always wanted to coach, and somehow from coaching, I go full into teaching, and then from teaching to administration, I've been doing it for the last 42 years here at Grant. This is my passion, this is what I love, this is my own, well, not this.
Now, don't look at this, okay? Thank you.
So I'm the son of a teacher, and my parents were volunteers, and I can't think of a better way to pay back the fact that I was a public school kid, my kids are public school kids, and like Jennifer and everybody else, basically, if we can't do it right for the kids, we're really failing. So I swear, my, I got guitar lessons, maybe.
I do it for a very selfish reason. I love learning, and I want to make sure that I have a positive influence and impact on the future, because the future is going to take care of me, make sure that we live in a world that's safe, that we have choice, that we are able to speak freely, that we can make decisions with rational reasons, and to me, that's the only way to go.
Thank you.
I spent the recent years being a teacher and administrator, and I wanted to be on the committee for Parks and Rec, and missed the deadline. And so people convinced me that I should run for the Board of Ed, and I didn't, because I agree with Jennifer very much, my parents are immigrants, and I enjoy a very good life here because of what an education can provide to people in this country, and it is the foundation of our democracy, and it is the way that people can make a better life themselves. So it's truly important, it's really calling, I think, for every people who are on the board, people who teach, people who are administrators.
So I'm in charge of finance and services. So my perspective is perhaps a little different, but I have spent most of my career working in higher education. So my kids are now in the public school system, I loved what it had to offer when I was looking at schools for my kids, so I was excited to be a part of this. But I also get to do something where I could actually feel and see the end results, I get to see a building being renovated, I get to see where the dollars go.
You play a very important role, and everybody else gets to do what they need to do.
So I'm going to try not to cry this time, like the last time. Before we were on the board, I'm like, oh my gosh. I started to. I think clearly, so many of the things that people have said are at the heart of why all of us are here. I think mine has a little bit of a different angle also, I do come from a family of educators, and I guess I often said, you know, it's kind of in my blood. And I think for me, part of it is, I feel like education done right is so exciting, and I want to make that happen.
And it's your turn. I like the way schools smell. But I also think that truly integrated, inclusive public education is the only way that you can level the playing field for everything in this country. It's all what I've always said, I think, there's nothing better, I think, than giving back. If you're going to give back to your town, which I think we all should always give back to our town or to our country, that's not what's going to count in due degree, but what you can do for your town. I mean, there's nothing better than education, because it is the foundation of everything, and it's the great equalizer. And I have three children going through it. I'm a proud of those public schools. I remember having an option, looking at private schools, and I am so thankful that my parents continued with the public school route. My father then went on the Board of Education in our town, and I saw the influence he had. And our schools improved, not only academically, but socially, emotionally, everything. And I hope that I'm helpful here. I actually think financials are fantastic, but why not always make them better? And that's all there.
So I have a little bit of a different perspective as well, because I'm not a certified educator, but I work for the schools in the capacity of communications. And I believe very, very strongly in public education. I believe that teaching is probably one of the most important professions that there is, because without teachers or coaches of some sort, we don't have any other professions. And whatever I can do, even if it's, you know, this much to support our teachers and our administrators, I'm thrilled to be able to do it.
Thank you.
Love public service, it's kind of interesting. I, when I went to high school, you didn't have to have good grades to get into college. You can do the types of things that kids get the opportunity to do now. My guidance counselor said the only thing very good for us was when you're in the army. And when I graduated college, I had cum laude in law school and was an ROTC graduate, he was right in the wrong way. And serving in the military, working for an association of retarded citizens when I got out, I was working for a construction company when the state took over the heart for public schools, and they were saying, come on over, we want you to come work. And I'm thinking, yeah, I'm not really interested, not something down my thing. And then I got thinking about it, and I go, if I do my job right, 24,000 kids get a better education. And as Jennifer and Ralph pointed out, the community then has a better product of employees, and that's got to help, right? So if I can be a part of that, in terms of making sure we've got the right people in the right places to get kids educated the way they need to be, then I'm all for it.
Thank you. Wow, I'm going to ask that question from now on, because I really like your responses. And I heard a variety of things, but it was really all centered on kind of the same thing, your community prospers when the schools prosper and the children prosper. And that's really what this work is all about. And I'll probably just throw in real quick, because you don't know me either, and I want you to know me as well as I know you. My getting here was very strange, I was the first in my family to go to college, started marine biology, but my math skills were so terrible, I ended up with music and English as my majors. And I came out of it, went into the music business, in the stereo business, I sold stereos for Sam Goody, if you ever remember Sam Goody back then. When he owned it, it was a lot of fun, when he sold the company, it went down a little quick. And then I ended up coming back to Connecticut and going into the field plumbing business, which is a very unusual way to get into education, but I was in people's houses every day, which was really kind of interesting. And then I just, I started going to school board meetings, because my oldest was just getting ready for kindergarten, and frankly, they were doing some really stupid things. I shouldn't say that, but I, the first meeting I ever went to, they needed to close a school. They had three half-empty elementary schools out of seven, and they knew they had to close one, but they didn't want to close any of them. So they voted to close the school, they actually, I made a motion to close the school, it passed. But then they said, all right, which one? I moved, we closed Laurel School, failed. I moved, we closed Metacotta School, failed. They even voted to close the high school, which was not an option. And they failed, and so, and Peter Proudie, and I saw in your report that you used him for your demographic data, Peter was on the board right after he and I served together. And the two of us were always butting heads with everybody else, well, it got so bad, the community changed the board, and all of a sudden, we had a team of people working together. And I started to realize how important boards of education are to this whole mix. If you do your job poorly, the kids are lucky if you don't mess things up, but if you do your job well, you can really have a profound impact on what happens. And in fact, that's what Lighthouse is all about, is, the study was, how do boards influence student achievement? And when they did the research, they found that boards do influence student achievement, they can have a positive impact, or they can have a negative impact. And the work is about how can you focus your attention on what the positive impact will be? And we're going to talk a little bit about that tonight, but then that's our work as we go forward. So our first exercise, this is going to be kind of fun, take the red sticky note, the little post-it note, and you're going to write a number, percentage of students currently succeeding in your district. Don't talk to everybody, just in your own head, what percentage of students currently succeed in your district?
Write it on the sticky note?
Write it on the sticky note.
And I pulled it up?
Yeah.
And the red one, right?
This is one of those places, one of the great ones, we have two roles at the same time, we're going to do this together, it'll take a little longer to do that.
I think it's a trick question.
Any answers, a good one at this point, so.
Don't overthink it.
What pops in your head? We're going to, we're going to talk about it. Okay, so now, on the blue sticky note, write the percentages, make sure I get it right, write the percentage of students that are capable of success in red. I don't see people struggling with this one. It's pretty amazing, this stuff. Prepare with me for a minute.
Yeah, I'm really impressed. Are you going to see all of them?
Or maybe not.
I can see children on the side of the bed.
And now, we're going to do the ones that you believe they should do. Is that right? That's okay, I think there is a.
Oh, come on.
Everybody except Karen's kids, I think.
You're lucky you're not in a urban district.
We do this a lot in urban districts, and we get very different, well, you know what? This doesn't change that dramatically, it might go from about 90 to 100, maybe at 85 here or there. This tends to be a lot more spread out. I'm going to take a picture, because we're going to need this later. Okay, now, first question, what frame of reference did you use when you came up with your number? What made you say 70% or 79 or 82? What source of information helped you shape your opinion, your perception?
I was thinking about graduation rate, you know, college career readiness, kids that aren't being suspended or expelled, I was thinking of test scores, I was thinking of a lot of things at the same time.
Same.
I would say I sort of started with that, and then there's sort of just that experience you have of kids you need along the way, and add kids in the school, so sort of, you know, and sort of trying to think about it from both perspectives, not just sort of what does success mean in terms of, yeah, maybe they're getting the score they need, but are they reaching a potential? Or, you know, maybe they're struggling in some other way, or maybe, you know, could success be some other picture for them? So kind of trying to take the hard things and then mush them around.
That's a question, do you know, any, do you know Simon Sinek? Simon does leadership development, and there's a great video that he does on why organizations exist. We may talk about that in a future session a little bit. But he also, one of his, in his book, it's a follow-up to the famous TED Talk, is that he talks about that there's a difference between success and achievement, and he gets into some detail on that, and it's kind of interesting, because success is a state of mind, achievement is a metric, there is a score. You have to do, you either got it, or you didn't, whereas there are some very successful people, people who feel very successful, that are broke, or would not necessarily look as successful to someone else. And there are people who have a lot of money, a lot of pain, whatever, and they're miserable. So the measurement of success is a little more personal and it's internal compared to achievement.
That's why I, I wasn't able to put a number on that one, I said it depends on the definition of success, because for all the reasons that I just, I wasn't able to.
Somebody usually asks that question when we first give out the instructions, what do you mean by that? So that's what we want to talk about a little bit. Does this board get regular reports on where students are, how students are doing?
Yeah. Do you have reports?
Which frankly, actually, I can kind of tell, because this is actually fairly consistent, you might have different perceptions of what you think it should be, but, I mean, in some of those challenged districts, they'll start at about 25%, and it'll be a very, very even spread from low to high. So what are your observations about this? So we've talked about how you came up with them, but what do you see when you look at the numbers? What do you think?
It's a common understanding.
Is it good enough?
I don't know if it's, it's never good enough, but I think, you know, there's a consistency in terms of where we all think we are, right? You might have a different impression of where we are, or why we're at, or where we need to go, but.
I mean, I remember one board member who said, she put 10%, and this was a district, it was a fairly high achieving district, but she said, we're doing, we do great on math and reading and writing and all of the basic skills, but we don't give the arts to every one of our children. They don't have music or those other things, and she says, so in my mind, we're failing 90% of the kids, because we have, so in her mind, it was over there, and I get that, and people could agree with her at the same time, not coming up with the same number. That's why I think it's important for you to kind of share your observations, because this, again, our work going forward is really, we're losing the mind. How do we get from here to here? You know, once we agree on what this really means, how do we get to here? That's our work, is that your work?
Well, I was looking at that and thinking, I think it's, we all have the same outcome, we want every child to be successful, but I was thinking in terms of the next generational, next generation accountability index, and because it does have so many different parts of who a child is and what types of experiences we value. So that's, that's what I was using in thinking about what the percentage was based on that, which is multiple measures. So I was thinking in terms of that, but it's kind of interesting as I look at it, to see that there is, I did not expect there to be as much of a difference for the red as there is, so I think that's kind of interesting. So it's going to be interesting to hear what the different, what the different thoughts are, and what people see from that, with the green, and then with the red. So I think it's, it's interesting.
I'm not sure if you asked me if the group of kids who are not successful are, are the same group of kids. I think I find my perspective.
Dilabrate on that just a little bit.
So I may say that we're not doing well with 20% of kids who are kids with disabilities. Somebody else may say we're not doing well with 20% of kids who are minority kids. So I'm not sure who we think is not doing well is necessarily the same group of kids. Or in what way they're not doing well. I mean, that's, right, there's so many factors that are different.
And so my, to you, the touch factor was, well, one kid might be succeeding well in one area, but not necessarily in another, so how does that balance out, you know?
Well, you could have, and I looked at your profile, and you have areas of strength you have, and I kind of knew it, but it really reinforced that knowledge when I went back and really looked at the demographics of your student body. And there are a lot of students who you don't, us outsiders, us foreigners, don't necessarily equate to red, and these are your kids. And I'm guessing that's a challenge for communication, is how do we get the community to understand who our kids are too? It's not just the decision-making bodies here that are helping these kids, but also how do we make sure the community understands that? These are all our kids. And how do we engage the parents of those families that traditionally haven't been engaged? How do we get them involved? And that's going to be, again, part of the work.
I think, I think it's interesting that we all landed 100%, that all of our kids are capable. So through this process and through all of our work going forward, what do we value as those enabling conditions to ensure that 100% actually do succeed?
I'm going to remember you said that, because that comes up, like, it was very important, that was a very important observation. That was a very important observation. If I can take these off of here. And we're gonna continue this conversation. I mean, as we go along, we'll be talking, we'll be... So another question. What are some of the reasons, in terms of which group of kids? But in general, what is keeping us from being at a hundred percent? What are the causes of the twenty or thirty percent of children that aren't doing it? Just some observations. What do you think is, are the reasons for not every kid being at a hundred percent?
I think there are multiple risk factors. And the ones that have more than one risk factor are doing most of all. And we all know what those risk factors are, don't need to go into it. But I also think that it is certain families that either do or do not support the academic success of their kids.
A number of our staff members don't believe that all our children can be at a hundred percent. Big problem. Big problem.
I'll throw in there, I'm not sure all of the students believe that they're capable. One of the worst things you can do to a kid is tell them they can't work. And sadly, that happens way too often. Or...
I was gonna say, I think it's hard to create an environment or something that will engage every student. And I think if they're not engaged, it's much harder to succeed.
You gotta get the retention before they're gonna open their mind up to this.
Plus, I think it depends on what we're using for a measure. So seventy-five percent of the kids might be able to hit the achievement mark we're setting for math and English, right? Math, writing, read. But the other twenty-five percent might not really care about that, because they care more about music, or the arts, or tech, or technology. And they don't see the value of achieving here, because their focus is achieving somewhere else. But we don't measure that in the same role play that we measure achievement here.
Or we, I mentioned before, I wanted to be a marine biologist, and math killed me. Well, I couldn't wear math. I just, you know, but you had permission in the old days. It was like, well, you're just not a bad person. And there's a book called, oh, shoot. It'll come back to me in a second. But the whole idea was disruptive change, that's what it was. And it talked about how there are large disrupting influences on things, like the music business. When digital electronic, digital music came out, it killed the record business. If you talk about the radios, well, we used to have the tubes, and then all of a sudden they came out with transistors. That was a revolution, in a way, from what took place before. So we have these disruptive things. And the problem is that this is kind of going on in education right now. But the other ones were influences from the outside in. And this is an influence where we have to do it from the inside out. And that's why we have so much challenge with all of this. But it gets into the whole issue of how do we have effective change? And, but it does start with, we have to make sure the kids are getting what they need. And part of the problem is, they don't... Some of it is brain wiring. There was something on the news the other night about, again, another study that says kids' brains are wired differently. So if we expect them to learn the way we learned, you know, back to the math for a second, in this book, Disrupting Class, I think it was called, they talked about how, because they talked about math instruction. And they said they taught math one way. And if you learned well, you got it, that's great. If you did really well, you taught math, and you perpetuated the system. And if you didn't do math well, there's a lot of other jobs you don't need math for. And what we're finding now is that, you know, when I started getting into computers at a much later age, all of a sudden, math made sense to me. All of a sudden, you know, working on databases and such, and formulas, and there's, it's algebra. I mean, it was fascinating how fast I picked it up. But I could never do it in the traditional class. Well, shame on us if our kids don't learn math, because there are other ways of teaching it, et cetera, et cetera. Again, we're gonna talk about some of these things as we go along, because the board influences stuff. In fact, I'm, from what I've seen, and your strategic plan talks a lot about changing those things and making those things happen. The social emotional, too.
Yeah, I don't think that academics, the academics, the kids are only gonna learn once they're engaged. So the teachers not leading students being one of the things up there, or students not leading students is, that's first and foremost. Because if I believe I'm not capable to reach my full potential, then I'm gonna shut down and not reach my full potential. So I think it's, it might be more complicated than just risk factors, or I think it's more, not everybody is, not every, we have, not everybody fits in the box of, you know, check this, check that. I think that, I think that once educators are able to see the students as whole children, and value their strengths, and then help them believe in themselves by engaging them and helping them reach their full potential. Only then will they begin to even, begin believing in themselves. Academics is secondary to the, I mean, academics is secondary to the social emotional thing. Because if they're not gonna be good about themselves, they're not gonna learn anything. So it's, one goes before the other. They're together, but one's not gonna happen until the other.
Or by source, unfortunately, yeah, that's the one. I mean, there's a lot of work being done on social emotional right now. In fact, if any of you came to our convention on Friday morning, the first, you know, speaker talked about social emotional learning and the impact of trauma on children. And I think, Peter, you're the one that said, you know, if you have one or two things that happen, it compounds, and worse and worse. I was at a conference for my professional development this summer, and it was in general Alaska, which was kind of an interesting place to be. They have some fascinating things going on in social emotional learning right now. And it started, well, a lot of the native peoples in Alaska are very challenged communities. And one example, and they talked about the change in the school, the school environment. The students would, at eight, if school started at eight, at five after eight, there was a line out of the office, all the kids waiting to get their detention slip before they were sent into class. Because it happens that that community doesn't abide by the clock, as many of us do. And being five minutes late was nothing to a lot of these kids. You couldn't teach them that. It was part of their culture. And, but it caused lots of kids to be targeted and given detentions, and not, not feeling part of the school climate, because you're bad, you're bad. So they changed their, the way they did business, and there was still a line out the door at five after eight. But the school secretary, who was signing the kids in, would say, "Okay, you're in. Thanks for coming to school today. We're glad you made it. Here, go get breakfast, and then go to class." And just that change in the way the kids felt about themselves does a lot. And if you think about infusing that throughout the entire culture of your school, that these children are valued, all children are valued, it goes a long, long way. Fascinating journey we're on, isn't it? Other ideas, I don't want to spend the whole night talking about why this might be, but is there anything we haven't talked about yet that might be a cause for why we haven't changed?
I think there's still a value to being better than. That you're only good when you're better than somebody else.
Competition.
It's not, it's not a zero-sum game. So if I get it, then it means you don't get it, or something else, right? I think that still plays a role.
I think it's also those biases that we have, that we really don't come to terms with, that we don't realize that we have biases. Like, if I'm gonna be the best, you're not gonna be the best. And if you're not gonna be the best, it means I'm gonna be the best. And I don't think that we do it purposely, or because I'm, let's say, I'm a six-foot-four tall model, and I'm smart, and will miss America, or I'm the president of the United States. So I'm better than everybody else. And, you know, everybody else, you gotta come. And I think that we have unknown, we don't realize that we have biases. And I think that plays a lot into who we think can be successful and who can't, and who we try to engage with and who we don't. So I think it's just kind of interesting to think that.
Okay, did you hear that?
Nope, ready to move on.
All right. So why are you here? Why, why does the Greenwich Public Schools exist? What's the purpose of all this work? If they shut down the schools tomorrow, what would happen? I mean, why, why, why do you do all this?
Now, because the kids wind up at Starbucks and they're gonna be good.
In a legal way, or are you asking?
I don't know, though, it's not, the state law says we have to. I think it's more of why...
What would happen if, if they're shut down? You'd have a high crime rate, you would have generational poverty, possibly violence on the streets, you would have drug wars, you would have gang violence. I mean, you can go on and on. What would happen if you shut down the schools?
The people could go back to the farms.
They'll have other farms.
We all start, because we can't run small farms anymore.
Some could go to private school.
True.
Well, we have the continuation of the League State. I mean, Thomas Jefferson said that the purpose of public education was to separate the rubbish from the genius. And then the goal was to educate like the top ten percent of...
Males.
Of males.
Males only.
Landowner males, yeah.
Good point.
And so things have changed. And in fact, that, that economy can't work anymore. It did for a long time. You can run a factory with one or two managers, and everybody else was just a worker bee. But you can't anymore. So we have to do better. What I'm hearing you say is, we could do it. We know that the kids are capable of it. It's a matter of how do we get there. And success, by the way, doesn't necessarily mean they all go to heart. It could mean a whole lot of different things. But can they exist? Region one, one of the things we will do is, when we talk about Simon Sinek, we'll talk about more why. Why do we exist? And theirs was to prepare each child for what comes next. Which is such a simple statement, but very powerful, because it meant a whole lot of things. By the way, talking about the military, the number I saw recently was that seventy-eight percent of American high school students are ineligible for the military now. Partially because about twenty-eight percent actually pass the entrance exam. But the rest of them, it's for health. A lot of obesity is keeping kids out of the military. So they don't even have that route anymore. It's really kind of, it's a different world. I don't know if I did this when I was with you the last time. I like to try to represent to you, there's eight thousand nine hundred seventy-one dots on the page. Each of those dots represents a child. Almost nine thousand kids whose lives, their entire future depends on what happens in these schools. Entire life, their entire future depends what happens in there. And it's easy to say ten percent, fifteen percent. But ten percent is almost a thousand kids. I mean, if you think, there are nine hundred kids. That's a lot of children. That's a lot of, a lot of school buses we could fill up with kids. And where would they go to get what they need if it's not here? And so I'd like to just sort of represent this in a way. If we could have imposed the sticky notes onto here and start to think, visualize what that means, how many children that really represents, it's a significant number. And we all know, I know, you can do better. And I know you do well, and this is not a criticism. But we can all do better, because we've allowed ourselves to, we've allowed the system to let twenty, thirty percent, and the challenged districts, forty, fifty percent of the kids, not to, to go through without necessarily getting what they need to be successful. And I hope you'll remember this. You know, think about the kids in your neighborhood. Think about the kids you see in the school buses when they drive by. They're all part of this. Every one of them needs you. So we're gonna vote. I have a few of these interspersed throughout this. You just pick up a little clicker things in front of you, and you can hit one, two, three, or four. One, you strongly agree with the statement, I believe school boards can impact student achievement. Two, agree. Three, disagree. Four, strongly disagree.
Can we answer it, we, we as a board, like, make it real specific to Greenwich? Can this board influence achievement?
I don't necessarily think it has to be, but we might want to...
What's the difference?
One is specific to our circumstance.
Right.
Well, right. I mean, of course, you're doing that, right? We're a school board, and the question...
This is a universal question here.
Yeah, that's kind of a, it's sort of the universal, what... Shall we vote? Shall we vote?
Do we point somewhere?
There's fourteen, and so far, we have thirteen votes. You can all get, or fifty, yeah, we have fifty. Okay, so we're voting.
Oh, I'm sorry, I did the wrong one. I'm a logician. I have to hit four.
Okay, well, then you're the one, we'll move that one-four over. Well, that's good, that's a better result. So it won't change now, unfortunately. Thank you. At least you voted.
What time?
Keep hitting. Now, quickly, any comments, observation about that? Does that make sense?
Yes, it's open to interpretation.
Yeah, that's true. Subject to, well, we mean Greenwich, but it also means, it doesn't say positively, I'm happy. And the reality is, you could do, if you don't do your job well, you could do worse. And then the second question. I know blank about what school boards can do to increase student achievement. And I know a lot, I know some, I prefer a little, or I know nothing. It's radio, so I don't think that the people correct me, but...
Makes me feel better.
That's right. I do that all the time, too. Good. I prefer to see that kind of response. And by the way, you know, the first couple sessions are, I leave the term scripted, because there's certain things we want you to hear as part of the foundation. After that, we're gonna reassess where we go. Because I don't want to spend time talking about things that you already get. I don't want to waste your time. And it's a good enough drive to come down that we don't need to see each other if we're not gonna learn from each other. So we will be readjusting as we go along to make sure that what we do with you has the best value. So if you sit there, well, we already know all this stuff, why do we keep training? I hope you will see some value to it as you go along. No, we're not gonna vote on this one. We should. Yeah. So, well, the problem is, I'd have to give the answer away in the multiple choice.
We got just one.
So we're not the logician that I vote.
It's a union job.
It's a union job. So how many school board members?
That's okay. People will tell them how to do it, though.
Yeah. Usually, some would say all of them, or a majority. But the best answer, in my mind, is it's up to the board to say, let there be light. So it's none. You say, let there be light, and the superintendent gets to decide, using staff assistants, obviously, is it gonna be a desultative candle, et cetera, and designate the appropriate staff person to do it. So even to, we're not gonna tell them how to do it. And I know you're being sarcastic, but that was good. But it's important. And I had to add the last part, when I was working in a small district, and I was doing this kind of, in fact, I had done this exercise in the meeting. And a little while later, I noticed the superintendent writing feverishly, just legal pad, page after page, and he's, "What are you doing?" You know, "I'm just finding bacteria, because I'm taking the minutes." Now, I don't know that minutes have to be that elaborate for a meeting of this anyway, but is that something you've always did? And, yeah, the board didn't want to spend money on a reporting secretary, so I take the minutes. And one of the board members literally stood up and said, "She's screwing in a light bulb." And the board's, "Yeah, you're right. That's not, that's not right. She's the chief executive officer for the board, and she's screwing in light bulbs. It's not, that's not her job." So they sat back as their, in their legal capacity, because they provide the budget and the resources. They said, "We have to change that." And they found the resources to provide the assistant to get that done. Because when I went back a couple weeks later for a follow-up meeting, she was in her office typing up the minutes. So it was, she was spending a lot of time doing the work that somebody else could have been doing, which means she was not doing her own work. And then it's up to the board to evaluate the quality of lighting, to, you know, through the reporting. Are we getting the things we were promised? Are, as we are debating whether to implement the program, are we gonna be talking about what will it look like when it's done well? We're gonna have those conversations here in a later session, because we actually developed a tool to help boards through that thought process. It can be very helpful. And it's really about the work that only the board can do. Because you have limited time. I mean, you have, how many regular meetings a month?
One regular meeting.
One regular meeting a month. And it usually goes, what, two, three hours?
We have two.
We'll say three hours per meeting.
And then what about all the committees that were on?
Oh, absolutely. There's a lot, I'm not trying to minimize the amount of time you put into this, but I would argue that the most important work that a board does is what they do in their regular meetings. Because that's when you take the action that moves the district forward. And if it's 12 meetings, three, 36 hours a year, it might be 40. But how much of that time do you spend on student achievement? Because we are back to, what do we spend our time on? There's a lot of things pulling us in different directions sometimes. So how much time do, would you spend on student achievement?
None at all.
That's usually the answer here.
Yes, we all agree.
So we're gonna talk about that as well, in terms of how do we focus on the right stuff as we go along.
I think, I'm, I'm sorry, just a sidebar.
Sure.
The other work that the board spends valuable time on is contract negotiations. And, um, typically, there's very little focus on student achievement in those types of environments, because it all boils down to money.
Right.
And you never get to the discussions on, on achievement and how some, you know, rarely do you. Sometimes you can, but it always boils down to, what are we gonna pay? What are the benefits gonna be?
Oh, well, maybe it means we need those conversations, but that's not the, the venue for it. So it might mean to the board come up with some other ways of including them in those conversations, so that they also have some ownership in where we go. And talk about communication as we go along.
But I would go back to, are the discussions around the enabling conditions to ensure student achievement? Does it always have to be by the numbers?
Right.
So how are we acting and what are we doing to ensure that happens?
Mm-hmm. Good. So now we're gonna kind of move into, um, a conversation about urgency. And, um, we're gonna introduce you to, uh, several students. And, um, they're doing a reading prompt. And, um, kids are reading a passage, and you have it in your binder. You'll see, there's a couple of them, but the first one is develop unqualified detectives. It's like this. Student is going to read the prompt and then answer the questions on the back. You might be following along, taking notes as you listen to it. Because I'm gonna ask you to observe, um, the video. Get your reaction to what you see, how you, how you feel about this. And we're gonna start with Rachel. Rachel reads it about the 90th percentile. And, uh, she's going to read this reading prompt. And I just want you to, oh, and to be fair, somebody who has a stopwatch on their phone or something, I'd love somebody to time how long she actually takes doing this, because it's pretty interesting.
Okay, what I'm going to do is have you read a passage. And when you're done, I'm going to ask you questions about what you read, but you won't be able to look back in the story. And if you come to a word that you don't know when you're reading, either try it or just keep going. All right. First, read the title to yourself and tell me what you think's going to happen.
There are going to be people who are trying to solve a mystery.
All right. I'll move this, and you can go ahead and start.
It had been raining. Katie and her brother Michael were looking for something entertaining to do. Aunt Sue came into the living room and announced, I can't find my purse. The children looked for the missing purse in various parts of the house. Michael looked in the den where his aunt wrote checks, but no purse. Kate searched the, the bedroom carefully, because the purse was last seen there. It wasn't there, but Kate recalled that her aunt had been shopping earlier that day. She ran outside. Just as she arrived, Michael was opening the trunk and Kate saw the purse.
Come in. She, last, from the time she asked the question about the title, it's 42 seconds. What do you observe?
Does he feel it?
She was inflection.
She knew what the story was about before she read it? Someone's gonna solve a mystery.
There was no teacher feedback. Maybe it comes later, but.
Well, this was a reading assessment. I'm sorry, I shouldn't have said that. So she was just sitting there scoring her. So I apologize, I shouldn't have said that. So, yeah, that was just basically an opportunity for, for her to get her started. Do you think she would answer the questions on the back?
No, yes.
Think she's gonna have any trouble succeeding in school? From what we're, from what we're seeing out of this?
I'm not sure you can say that, because although you can pronounce words on a page, that doesn't mean that you know the answers to the questions about what is it all about. I'm not sure you can draw that conclusion.
Also, the, the teacher, or the person assessing her, um, said, you're not gonna be able to look back in the story. When I was following along, I don't know if that was like paying attention, but where everything happened. I don't know if I could answer this without looking back at some point, to see the chronology of the time, so I agree.
Good points. Good points. But in general, if we're talking about her ability to read, it can be good.
She did.
Okay. Now, I'm gonna introduce you to Keisha. Now, I wanna talk about Keisha for a minute before I play this video, because sometimes people are disturbed by it. Keisha is an African-American girl. She reads significantly below the 25th percentile. And, um, I will tell you right now, if you need a handkerchief, take it up now, because I still tear up when I see it sometimes. I'm loading this, I don't, I'm sorry for that. Yeah. But when we started doing training in Connecticut, we really debated whether we should show this video or not. Because there's sort of like, are we supporting the stereotype? Are we causing so? Frankly, uh, Keisha is the face of a lot of children. And frankly, from what I've seen of your demographics, significant to Greenwich in some ways, maybe not the same numbers, same amount. But still, there are children that look and have struggles that Keisha does. So we made the conscious decision to show the video. We had options for some other kids. But we, and Keisha's mom, by the way, really kind of insisted, no, I want other kids to see what she's gone through. And if she can help some other kids along the way, then I think it will be a good thing. So, um, I'm gonna do this now. And same thing, somebody take the time on this one here.
Okay. What we're going to do is I am going to have you read this passage right here. And then, when you're done, I'm going to ask you some questions about what you read, but you won't be able to look back in the story. And when you're reading, I, um, if you come to a word that you don't know, either try it or just keep going. All righty?
Okay.
First, I just want you to read that title to yourself and tell me what you think will happen. Any thoughts on what you think might happen? Okay. All right, I'll move this, and then you can go ahead and start.
It had been raining. Katie and her brother Mitchell were looking for something.
Try it, keep going.
To do, Aunt Sue came into the living room and.
Try it, keep going.
I can't find my purse. She, I mean, the kids looked for the missing purse and.
Okay, keep going.
Of the house. Mitchell looked in the den here. Here, here she, Aunt, Wart, Chat, but on purse, but, it says but on purse. Katie searched the bedroom, cried, cried fully. She, because the purse was less seen there. It wasn't there, but Katie recalled that her aunt had been shopping. That day, she ran outside. Just as she arrived, Mitchell was opening the truck and Katie saw the purse.
Just under turn. Comments?
It seemed like the teacher gave different instructions. I don't, I don't, I take that up. She didn't use the same instructions for the second child. And it seems like the second child, even though she didn't know what the words were, had trained herself to assume what the story was, so that she wasn't actually seeing the word, but she.
She kind of, although, I don't know that she could tell this, after reading it, that she could tell the story, because she was so busy focusing on words. But you're right. I've had other board members who've suggested she didn't treat her as someone either.
She was a struggling reader.
Pardon me?
She was a struggling reader. She was working at trying to figure out what the words were. Chances are, she was not thinking about what she was reading. She was just reading the word.
Who was working harder?
The child.
She was working harder. She wasn't that, she wasn't trying? I've had people suggest that she might have dyslexia, she did mixed, she was around. Pardon me?
The on versus no. I mean, it's not a difficult word, but she clearly had it reversed.
She might.
Children. Answer, kids.
Yeah. That was interesting, too.
Yeah. So, I mean, she was thinking, suggesting.
Yeah, she was focused. She was, she was telling the story without reading the story.
She assumed a lot of gumption. I mean, she kept going. Yeah. Which was really impressive. Some people would've just given up.
She didn't stop smiling?
No, and in fact, I felt like she got a little better. And she was. She hit the word search, recalled. I mean, those are two pretty hard words. She got some hard ones in the past.
What's, what's the prognosis for her if nothing changes, though? I mean, fourth grade, when we start getting assigned to go home tonight and read this chapter.
She'll always be behind it.
She won't be able to access what she wants to say in the middle of the class.
She'll be very difficult. And she needs an adult who really cares. A good teacher.
What happened?
Pardon me?
I wonder what happened now.
We don't have the data on her. We're gonna see Will in a minute, and we do have some data on him, which I will share after. But we do understand that she did get intensive support and she did improve. In fact, I was on the phone yesterday with the people from Iowa, and they're still trying to find out now, because it's, this is 10 years old. So, um, they're trying to figure out if they can see what happened to her, because I would love to be able to report that we had a happy ending to this thing. And as I said, we're gonna meet Will in a couple minutes and we'll talk about what happened. Yeah. Nobody's ever asked that before. So I like doing this, because the questions are always different.
But there's a lot of, um, cultural bias in that story. Purse is not a word that's used a lot. Dan is a very small word. She should've known, but I don't know that she did. Social context for that. So I think sometimes we see the impact of poverty where kids don't have. And, and we spend so much time decoding and not realizing that they don't have common experiences, which puts them behind the equal. She did get better as it went on. And I think, because she had more context of the words.
She was shopping. Which I thought was great. That shows that that might be something that she does. And she's seen the word, so.
Okay, so I'm just making sure we hit all the questions. You've got your observations, et cetera, et cetera. Do you think Keisha answered any of the comprehension, comprehension questions?
A problem in reading the text.
Pardon me?
Her effort was on reading.
Yeah, just focusing on the words. So now we're gonna talk, see a couple eighth graders. And, um, Paul is about the 75th percentile. And that is the next page in your folder called Our Environment. You're gonna follow along with that.
You need a timer, you don't need a timer.
I, you know, I've never done this one, but if you, if somebody wants to, that might be a, a, a.
Our environment. Besides using plants and animals for food, people use the hides of animals for shoes, the wood from trees to build houses, the fiber from the cotton plant to make skirts and shirts, and the wool from sheep to make suits and coats. Even the synthetic fibers that people use are made from the matter found in the environment. People and the environment are interdependent. That is not the whole story. Modern people can use, can do much more. They can use science and technology to change their environment. Because of their advanced brains, people can investigate and use the precious environment, our environment.
Observations? Got it? Not much to say. Let's talk about, let's see Will in a minute, sir.
Our environment. Besides using plants and animals for food, people use the hides of animals for shoes, the wood from trees to build houses, the fiber from the cotton plant to make shirts and skirts, and the wool from sheep to make suits and coats. Even the synthetic fibers that people use are made from matter found in the environment. People and the environment are independent and, but that is not the whole story. Modern people can do much more. They can use science and technology to change the environment. People, their advanced brains can, can invest and use their. Pressure.
Again, cut it. So, um, what do you think happens to Will if nothing changes? He's going into high school, actually. He's in the 4th. What kind of problems is he in? What challenges?
Could be a drop off.
He was also significantly below the 25th percentile, really. Comes as statistic. When you see these videos, does it, I don't know, does it tug at the heartstrings a little bit? Does it make you think, I don't want Will's or Keisha's to have to go through what they're going through?
Of course.
Write out your, uh, write out your clickers. Because in Will's case, we do know that they did some follow-up, um, intervention with him. And fall of '04 to spring of '05, they did.
Fall of '04, spring of '05.
What's that?
It's like air and snow.
No, it's not. No, it's, uh, it's. No, it's not. It's, no, it's, it's half a school year. Let's say September to April, so it's about five, six months.
Half a school year.
Yeah, half a school year. They gave him intensive intervention. And so, you're gonna be voting on whether you thought there was no improvement, half a grade, one grade, two grades, or three grades. One, there we go. So we had none. We had several half a grade, several one grade, and one each for two grades and three grades. The answer was actually two years, gross, in six months. This was the reading comprehension score. And I, that's why, again, I loved working with a couple of retired principals, because basically there's to all the technicalities about the test, which... But basically, the grade equivalent of two grades in six months. So now he's reading, instead of three, three point five, let's say third grade reading level, he's reading at a little above the fifth grade reading level.
Can you tell us what the intervention model was?
I don't. I'm sorry. I know that Harry, the guy that did the training in Iowa, was involved in some of that, because he was a principal back then. But I don't see that...
Is this typical?
From what I understand, yes.
It's gotta be a pretty intense intervention model.
Intensive intervention would give up two years.
Someone who probably hadn't had it before.
I mean, it might take longer to go from five and a half to six and a half than it did. But the fact is, it's, it's, in my mind, it shows it isn't Will. It isn't, it's not just Will, let's put it that way. Somebody figured out how to help him learn the way he needed to learn.
A shorter period of time.
Right, that's the achievement cap, thanks.
Yep. So it wasn't a very long period of time.
Right. And so, it, it, sometimes that speaks to the idea that it isn't, it isn't about whether we can or not. It's about whether we have, well, it's about resources, frankly, but it's about the political will. Do we have the will to make it, sort of a pun off of his name, but do we have the will to make this happen? And there's actually a quote we're gonna talk about that gets in a little bit more. So let's just, for a couple of minutes, the next couple passages in the book, you'll see. We've got reading, fifth grade reading prompts. There's several examples of some things we'd expect fifth grade readers to read. Ninth graders, there's a couple pages of those, three pages. Three sheets of those. And some on adult reading command. So beyond school, these are things that people would just sort of have to read in their daily lives. Just sort of for about five minutes, scan those a little bit, and just circle a couple of things that either surprise you, or, you know, think about, you know, Will, or, well, particularly Will, because these are gonna be for kids that are a little older. But talk, think about how that's gonna impact a kid like Will and some of the other struggling readers. So just take a couple minutes. Give you one more minute.
Is that a stupid one? It's a math problem.
Oh, yeah?
It's a huge math problem. It's been done.
Okay, I think we're...
I'm learning more.
Yeah.
Well, the funny thing is what jumps out at you when you look at, when you scan. I see sea cucumbers, so I'm like, oh, I'm reading about sea cucumbers. The rest of it doesn't, you know, interest you, right? I see flies, oh, okay, I'm reading about flies. It's funny how just the first couple of words of each of these phrases will attract you or turn you off, depending whether you're interested in looking at it or not.
Well, the last paragraph, that number five in that passage, you know, you're looking at, in many algae, the zygote is the only diploid cell under osmosis, right after fertilization. It just keeps going, and you don't know the words.
I think the math textbook should be banned.
Yeah.
It was. Sing a core math.
But even the level of detail in like the, the fifth grade science detail. The science technique.
Very technical.
Yes.
Yes. Vocabulary.
And once you miss something, that's it. The rest of it is just probably good.
Right.
Yeah, it's actually about language.
Yeah.
And with the math, it's essential understanding versus understanding.
You know, once you're going out of college, because I think in college recommendations, I still want to throw a couple of them in here. So that jumps out to me. I'm like, do I have to bring more by January one? If student is trying to apply for financial assistance, assistance or taking an instant T college, just beyond the cultural, the cultural, maybe if someone is, maybe someone is, English is their second language, and to, this could be the first time, if without somebody else in the alley, you do that process, and might not know what, you know, there are words in here that could be confusing either way, but without understanding the English behind it and, you know, a lot of these are very platforms, and so that can get confusing.
And, and if they...
People out of college, actually, without being able to do this.
And if they don't have these skills from what they learned, do you have enough guidance sponsors in the district to provide assistance to them, to help them with that? Because that might be another option, but that often is another area we just don't have the resources.
That's a role that we're told in too. I mean, you could lose, I mean...
Well, you asked earlier why we exist, right? We're talking about college and career readiness, but I'm looking at the application for an entry-level job as a security officer. If you can't understand what the role is, how are you going to apply to do the job?
Right. I mean, you can't even read a ballot in some states. You really can't vote, because it's the way the words are arranged in them.
I mean, things like finances, retirement, or any of the others, retirement, the 401K, insurance.
True, true.
So reading, obviously, is a critical area.
It's a path.
Right. Sometimes we, I'm making an assumption that you know that. But, you know, part of the board's role is to, are we providing enough to help those kids? That they were struggling with. We don't want Will to drop out of school. It's close. At eighteen now, I can't remember. Was sixteen, but I thought they changed it a lot, eighteen.
She had a parent right up to sixteen or seventeen.
I mean, my stepdaughter failed math in eighth grade, and she went to a school district where they only had one math teacher. So she ended up staying back a year, which they tried really hard to keep that from happening, but she just was stubborn and wouldn't work harder, or work smarter, whatever. But, so when she stayed back, they only had one fifth, one eighth grade math teacher, so guess what happened the next year? She had the same math teacher. And this math teacher already had the assumption, you're a family, you can't learn math. So she was doomed. And when she hit sixteen, she did leave school. You know, just... And I tried to make, talk about textbooks, you know. She did have, she tried to do homework once in a while. She'd say, I need to do, it was page five. They spent two weeks on page five. I don't know why anybody would do that, but they did. And, you know, my wife's an accountant, so, you know, she goes to her first. She goes, I have no idea. Talk to Nick, he's smart. I wasn't that smart. And I, I did what I think most normal people do. I read the chapter. I figured it would explain at the beginning of the chapter what it was, and I was, I could infer from that what it meant. Nothing. So they struggled for two weeks, and that's about when she gave up. That, at that point, she just said, I don't get it. And she just never did. And, you know, how many kids do we have like that in school districts that we wanna help? So, um... This didn't talk as much as I hoped it did. We've reached a point where I'm near closure for what I hope to do tonight. So maybe we'll go a little further and use the evening. You will see, again in your packet, a statement by Oh, and before you do that, I actually, I went to another conference a few years ago, and the presenter was doing a workshop on brain development. And it was fascinating. I learned more about how the human brain functions in that five-hour workshop than I never thought I would need. It was like a life skill. It's always stayed with me. But she showed this statement, and I remember this from sixth grade, because we've all seen something like this, but we had this one. It was designed to help people learn sentence structure. So the words are nonsense, but from reading this passage, if you understand how sentences work, you could then look on the back page and answer the questions. And so that was the test. And it's always fascinating to me, I mean, we did that, we could figure it out. But then I started to thinking about a kid like Will or Keisha, who are, they're having enough trouble with real words. What's gonna happen when they look at something like this? It's just, it really starts to make us think...
Actually, what they're doing most days is looking at something that looks like that to them.
Right.
Thank you. You're right.
Right? And that's what every day is for them, because they're not getting half the words.
Yeah, that's, that's very true. You know, what, how is tracks laying fossils? I knew it. And what does that mean? So we're gonna go past this.
I was glad he was gonna have us read it to, to feel, I would feel like in the mind of someone who's struggling with reading and see that's all.
But I'll, I'll just hit this for a second, because I know, I, I, Ralph and I had talked about the idea of having these things available online. And at connectatlynhouse.org, which is the website set up for our White House project, there is actually a section for Greenwich. So if you go to the homepage, you'll see a list of the districts that are participating or have participated. Click on Greenwich, and all the documents that you have here, including the ones we won't get to tonight, will be on there. And I don't put the PowerPoints up until after we're done. One, because I changed things right at the last minute. But two, a lot of this was interactive, and if you had it in front of you, you might be looking at it and not having a conversation. So that will be converted to a PDF and uploaded on Monday. But connectatlynhouse.org is where you can find that. And as we have our conversations, there's a lot of other really good material on that. On that page, there's a lot of documents that we found that are supportive of the same kind of work and such. So take a look through there, and you'll see some very interesting things. And next month, or next, when we meet again, I'll have your picture up here. By the way, this is Brooklyn, and you see, there's still, first of all, a little more separation here, but also a lot more separation now to one school district. But they're all, just to give you a little perspective. So...
Just as good, Carol. It's just as good.
So let's read the, the passage by Richard Slaven. And I want your opinion on this. So, you know, again, mark it out if you need to. Does anything stand out? Does anything bother you? Does anything disturb you, or do you find it rigorous?
This was written in nineteen ninety-six or something?
Two thousand and six.
But it's...
Oh, ninety-six, you're right. Yeah. One of the disadvantages of having the state funding disappear is that we can't do the research to update some of this stuff. All the, the foundation of this is...
No, that's why, no, I'm, I'm...
Having, having the same conversation, you know, later.
No, not that. It's just, I was wondering if this, like, always this question.
Looks like most of you are done. Let's have a conversation.
What's the question? I'm sorry, what's the question?
Um, your comment, Jeff, is there anything in here that resonates or disturbs you? Do you, how do you see the implications for your district?
Well, starting with the top, I think, to me, I think it's different to say that a hundred percent of students can succeed than to say that every school can ensure the success of a child. I mean, I think there's a huge amount schools can do, but I think to say that alone, the school can ensure it, I think is unrealistic. You know, if a kid's in a home where there's abandonment, and they're not grounded, and they're constantly threatened by violence, it's very hard to compensate for that in school. And I'm not saying you don't try, but I think to ensure complete success in that circumstances...
But this is, this is, this is a goal statement, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's not, I, that's why I'm trying to understand what it is, right? Because this is somebody who says, this is the kind of system...
It's a premise in a book they do.
They're trying to say, this is the kind of system we're gonna have, right?
Well, I think, well, I would rather...
This is what we're committed to.
Yeah. I would rather have your interpretations first before I give you mine, just because I don't wanna do all the talking.
With ensuring, it also says nearly all children. So, I don't know. I mean, if we're putting a hundred percent on a sticky note that says we believe a hundred percent can achieve, nearly all children can get there. I don't know why, whether it's in, over age level, we'd say nearly all children. I don't know what forceful intervention is.
Yeah, I know, that's...
That's, that's alarming to me. Use with intelligence, flexibility, and fidelity. I mean, I feel like, again, it's, I feel like children are put in a box here, you know? This, this, and this, it's a formula, intelligent, flexible, and fidelity.
I was surprised they left out the role of principals altogether, which I think is alarming, because they are the most important, in my view, to student achievement. because they are the most important, in my view, to student achievement.
Well, there's a, I saw during, there's a dot, dot, dot here, so there's a whole bunch of stuff that doesn't seem to have been said.
Yeah, it's an excerpt from the, the preface is a couple pages long, if I remember correctly.
Yeah.
But it's a good observation, though, that we have to remember that they are a critical part of the process, absolutely.
I don't believe in our district, anyway. It's got to be lower expectations for students that are entered into special education.
Yeah.
In any case, I think it shouldn't be an assumption that just because you do, you are. I think, I think that whether it happens or not, I think it certainly should be an assumption that because you're doing it, that you are below the expectations. And this needs to assume that that's the case.
That's why I was asking when this was adapted.
It's old.
Two thousand and six. Two thousand and six, but two thousand and six is the most recent, that's what.
Well, that's when I were printing this document. So it's ninety-six is when we actually wrote this passage.
But they still abide by it since two thousand and six, or they still do. I'm trying to see.
No.
Two thousand and six was the doc, the PowerPoint. Got it, you're right.
Okay.
So I think Peter's right. This is basically a goal statement. And yes, we put things like this in our goal statement. But what this does is, well, if you're not getting to a hundred percent, basically, why are you, you're wired by. I don't think it's an all or nothing, right? We're trying to move on a continuum and move everybody to the best of their abilities. So how we define for each student might be different. We have nine thousand students, we might have nine thousand definitions of success, so to say. We're failing students in many of these areas, I think.
And resources aren't unlimited.
Right.
You have a capacity of resource, period.
Right. So, you know, it's nice to say, this doesn't work, and do that, and do that, and do that, and be absolutely relentless, you can get them, do the two, do all these things. But the reality is, you know, every community has to make some choice. There isn't an infinite amount of money, there isn't an infinite amount of time, there's not an infinite resources, infinite teachers. So how do you balance that? How do you figure out those things? And I think one of the key things is to figure out, well, which of those things works best? And how do you try and maximize the things that are really going to work? So you get the most success you can out of whatever resources you have.
It's sometimes easier to take a large group of kids a certain, to a certain level than it is the few that don't get that. The smaller the group of kids, the harder it is to find what they need sometime. Or if you have limited resources, to put the resources toward the larger group, and then sometimes the smaller groups get lost.
The, sorry. The reason. Gee, let's see it go.
What this brings to mind for me is more, you know, trying to establish the conditions for success for every child, knowing that we're not going to necessarily, I mean, if the, if the parents don't bring the children to school, we can't. But what this brings to mind for me is, is at what point do we identify that sense of urgency that we need to do more than we are, or do something different than we are, that we're not doing enough? So, yes, there may be those exceptions, those reasons why we can't reach every single child optimally, but there probably are areas that we need to improve in. And at what point do we say, we're doing as much as we can, or we're not? And that's what this, that passage brings up for me, is like, how do we define that? And how do we create that sense of urgency?
And how do we have conversations about students in a different way? Not just by, sorry, you were next.
Bob was next.
Peter was next.
Peter.
I can be Bob, yeah. You better look in the knowledge.
You run fast.
What's that?
Peter.
There's only one Bob?
Yeah.
The reason I asked you what this is, is because, and I put it in this context of a board conversation. My general observation is organizations that do this kind of stuff, it's all motherhood and apple pie, right? But this, to me, is a sign of an organization that has no idea. Back to your question on urgency, they don't know what's important. They don't know what they're really doing. It's, it's like sitting in a room, writing down a series of statements of things that I am generally committed to, right? But it doesn't provide a lot of clarity. It actually provides, it actually creates entropy in an organization, you know, spinning apart. Because anybody can pick the piece they want and latch on to that. And as a result, you don't get urgency around really anything. And you may not make progress because everything is diffused. It doesn't mean there isn't goodness. Everything in here I read, I go, yep, yep, good, 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 right? And then the last thing I'd say is, I asked kind of what the context of this is. This, in, in most board systems, right? That's why I asked, is this a goal statement? What is this? This is really a series of policy statements for a board. You would break this down into, pick one. We will rarely assign children special education. That's a policy statement, right? And then somebody else has to go away and figure out how to pack this out, create it, execute it. So, I mean, this is great stuff, but I'm, I was trying to connect it to your sense of urgency thing. And I was trying to connect it to, what does a board do with this? Or what is an organ, let me say not board. What does an organization do with this?
Don't adopt success for all. We did that Hartford during the state takeover, it failed miserably.
Yeah, didn't.
This program.
Oh, is that, it's a program?
Yep.
Oh, gee.
Nineteen ninety-eight.
Okay.
Pretend it came in, adopted success for all.
Sounded like a good idea, didn't happen.
Three years of failure.
Don't worry, we got that, we got that.
Yeah, well, a lot of stuff in here that sounds a little bit like that, but it's part of a strategy with actions. And so you develop a plan from that, hopefully. I think you're right, and you can't do it all. But I think the point that I get out of this is that if money were no object, if resources were no object, we have the capa, we have the capability, not the capacity, that's the resource problem. We have the capability of helping any child be successful. And by every or all, I think there's a, the number I hear is understood that about four percent of children have a physiological reason that would keep them from achieving at the level that we say a hundred percent. But that's close enough to a hundred percent to say all, I think. But it gets back to, is it a question of, we can't do it because we don't know how? Or is it, we can't do it because we can't afford it?
Well, I hate to say it, however. So let me say this, right? You're holding our strategic plan in your hands. Right? The question is then how to action that to where we say, we're doing this the best way we know how, and the results are where we expect them to be, and we're on our, we're trying. Because it can't just be words on a page.
Right, absolutely.
I, I actually don't know if we know how to do it.
We don't.
I really, I take issue with that whole presupposition that every teacher in every building knows exactly what intervention will work with every child.
Well, that doesn't exist now, I would agree with you.
Yeah, and I don't think it exists in any school. I really don't. And I take issue with the last sentence, that you do, you see one child who has a failure, it's cause for alarm. I think that is old-fashioned thinking. I think kids should be encouraged to take risks. They should fail in small ways. They should learn from that, and they should move on to bigger and better projects. And failure to turn in homework means absolutely nothing in the long run. And the way we grade students is unbelievable, in my view.
Well, I think that's really why all this is, so it's, you know, I feel like when we were looking at those examples of reading, the first kid who didn't want to read well, I think there was a sense of, okay, that kid succeeded. They accomplished. I'm like, you know, just because they can read, and just because they can answer the questions on the back, I mean, to me, I know that that's success. And I think that's not talking about mushing, like every kid, what is success for them? You know, so is that kid able to ask, you know, different kinds of questions, or recreate it? Are there other things that that kid is doing? Can they fail and then pick themselves back up and try again? You know, do they have grit? So there's, there are so many different aspects of what success can mean. I think it's a little simplistic, and I, you want to be a little careful in terms of how you determine what that is. I think there's no doubt that we all want kids to be able to read well, but I feel like that's just the beginning. And I kind of felt like, we're like, you got it, you need some basic skills to get there. So how do we get to figure out how to make our success?
Well, what does get there mean?
Well, but, you know, I think you're seeing something alive and in living color here. If we're going to embark on this project, you know? What you're seeing is, is that what Gaetan just articulated is really sophisticated fifth-level thinking. Okay? So it's, it's, yes, I mean, who wouldn't agree with, I mean, I don't know anybody who wouldn't agree with what Gaetan just said as, it's very highly aspirational. To Peter's point, right, that document is highly aspirational, okay? And it's built on this premise. We can see it, we want to be cutting it, and we want to be out where that is, on the edge, because that's really where we want to be with kids. I think you would have to ask a really cold, hard question, is, we haven't been able to execute that. So the question is, is do we have the ability to actually execute at that fifth-level aspirational level? Or do we have to get realistic, you know, and say, or not realistic, that's a bad, that's a value check. Do we need to ask ourselves the question, guys, we're not going to fifth level. We have to go through two, three, and four first. And let's not kid ourselves, we haven't done a great job moving through particular level there. And you can't just jump out to, to fifth level thinking. Because I think we have no shortage of aspirations and no shortage of articulation of the most sophisticated, highly individualized to an individual kid. And, you know, eighteen definitions of what success might be, and, you know, we can all visualize that.
How to operationalize it, though.
And we, that seems to be, in my view, that is our, we, we, we could do this navel gazing all day long, but we can't turn that, it's just fantasy, right? Somehow we have to get at the, what has to happen organizationally at all levels to get from A to B? To C to D to E.
Dick Mary's, I know the last one.
We spend way too much time concentrating on the fish, and I think it's the water.
What's that?
We look at the kids as the problem, and the kids, the things that we need to solve. And I think in many cases, it's the environment we create. We look at schools today, they look just like schools, looking like kids, and there are different fish in the water. We keep trying to diagnose the fish, and don't change the water, we're going to keep having some sick fish. Not a lot, twenty percent. But it matters to me if one of those kids is my kid. And we look at such fundamental things that we think are the way things have to be. Kids have to be grouped by how old they are. Kids have to go to school during the day. There are just so many suppositions about the way things need to be that I think unless we get out of our own way and start looking into the environment, maybe we can do things very differently. And I'm someone who doesn't agree that you have to go through those, two, three, and four to get to five. An example I give to people is, you get one seriously mentally disturbed man on a plane, sets fire to his shoes, and within a month, the entire world is taking off their shoes in airports. We didn't go through steps to get there. There was a sense of urgency, there was a fear, and in a very short period of time, human nature, human behavior changed quickly. How do we, and I don't want to set my shoes on. But I do want. But how do we get that sense of urgency to say, the environment has changed, and we need to really, we think about our suppositions about school?
But nineteen eighty-five, Nation at Risk, a report that came out, talking about the status of education back then. And I think the quote, I think it was a direct quote, if another nation imposed on us and the education system we have today, we'd consider it an act of war. Something very close to that. This sense of urgency has been around for a long time, and yet it still hasn't changed.
Yeah, it's kind of following, not your mind. But it's hard to have a traditional model that works for all. Yet the traditional model works for many, right? So to sort of throw, throw it all away, well, it doesn't work from a financial perspective, and also would be affecting many children. So how do you have sort of a model that works for everyone? Well, it's expensive, probably, but if that's your community's priority, then you do that at the sacrifice, perhaps other than. Because it really is a zero-sum game at the end of the day. But I always sort of look at it even with my own children, because it's hard not to always personalize it, right? They've had, I look at, I'm talking about a few teachers that all of my children have had. And one would have had like a wonderful relationship with that teacher, and the other one would not, right? And I'm not saying that made that teacher better, good, because it was good for one child, not for the other. So does that mean you all of a sudden say, oh, I'm sorry, you have to switch classrooms? Because this, my child this time is learning as well? Or, in my case, I sort of said, you're always going to be facing different personalities in your life. And so this is an opportunity for you to see how to work with this one. Next year might be different, but this is what you got. So it's hard, because, you know, hopefully I address that situation, not, not all the time, it's going to happen and address it, to sort of make it work for them. But you can't just sort of events, I don't know, change it all at once.
It's, I guess the question is how do you change the culture? How do you change the culture of schools, is my question, where it is still very archaic in our, in our, in our thinking, in our, in our punitive system, in our, you know, you gave an example of lining up detention slips. People get detentions for missing homework at middle schools. Or that, there's, there's, I'm not sure how, it's a big question, but it's really important. That's, that's probably the disruptive change that's needed. I guess that gets into the next model next time. But how do we change the culture? How do we change the language that people use? Like, I guess, what do we, as a board, do we subscribe to? Do we, if we really believe that all students can learn, then are we willing to set aside those biases and actually look at each human being and respect them? Because I think students are very, very perceptive, and they, they can sense, they can sense. Like that, when the second girl was reading, and she said, okay, skip it or do this. I was thinking, wow, I can't believe she keeps going, like, that would drive me nuts if someone kept, in my ears being like, try again or skip it, try again or skip it. Like, I would really have a hard time with that. I couldn't believe she kept, just, she, she, she stuck with it. I know most important people like John Saffier, but there's, there's, I'm not sure, or, or, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not sure how we go about, I see dyry for change. Status quo is, in this district, is not working. And I see it, you know, I have two children's school districts, I don't, I'm not going to bring personal examples into it, but I, it's, it's not working, you know, for all students. And it's, we're, I think in a lot of ways, we're making more harm than good. I know we are, I know we are. So how do we change that environment where, you know, we, we start testing at age seven? And we do, you know, like you said, it's early Tom Stefferson, you know, back in the day, we start dividing students based on, based on test scores at age seven. That's, how do we, how do we, how do we do that? How do we, how do we start to make a change for the good of all? So all students can meet their maximum potential when we are confined to a system that believes in, we're setting kids up for, we're setting kids up for prison, really, when we start with the detentions, the suspensions, instead of saying, I believe in you. Like, how do we change our vision? Because what we're doing right now, without making this personal, what we're doing right now is we're really, really harming our future generations. We're doing a huge disservice when we don't. So how do we get there? What's the next?
I think part of it is, because I, I think, Peter, you had a good point of what we can't do it all. So I think part of the conversation the board has to say is, you've got, you've articulated what you would like to see in Greenwich Public Schools here, and it's very ambitious, and it is very likely that you can't do it all at once. So what are the foundational things that have to be put in place before you do the Level Five things you're talking about? Are we doing all the things that will support that? If we're not doing that, we have to start with that. That in and of itself should improve things.
See, Nick, the thing that. I'm, 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 I think I'm where Megan is, in that, you know, I don't necessarily, I don't know what it means, you know? I think there are things that we're doing that probably are not helping us as much. I think you used the word harm, I don't know that I would, but I, I get, I agree generally with that point. But the other part that she talked about is the organization and the culture, right? And I, no offense to you, I've been. And I, no offense to you, I've been, I'm like seven day old fish, I should long ago have not been doing this. But I've been through a number of these sessions, and they, this one, thank God, is not degenerating or starting with. They draw the org chart of, here's the board's responsibilities, here's the superintendent's responsibilities, here's the line between the two, you know, you got all that whole thing. But the, the, the thing you do have to recognize is, this is a whole organization, and everybody has a role to play, right? And my experience with doing transformations of other organizations in other contexts is, culture matters, it's the hardest thing to change, it's far and away the hardest thing to change. But getting everybody lined up is the other thing that leads to success, particularly when you're trying to do a transformation like that, that's as ambitious as that. And I'm, I'm stymied, because as a board, I always ask this question to myself as a board. What am I doing to be clear about what the goal is? Because I think that's our role in the organizational system. And then what conversations are we having so that I can help the people who have to go execute, right? So I, like, try to stay in our lane, but the other part about it is, is the organizational culture and the organizational execution, I don't have that lever in my hand. And by the way, I shouldn't have that lever in my hand, because otherwise it's the light bulb example, right? But the question is, how do I get, I can observe the culture of the rest of the organization, and I can see it's the wrong culture to get done what we're trying to do. I don't know how to break this, because I, this is like the fifth time we've had this conversation, it's new to you, it's not new to me. It's not new to a bunch of you, you've been around for a while. Question is, how do we do breakthroughs so that we actually get that done? To get the culture to change, to get people to get behind this different vision, they can jump, leap off, and go do it, and we can actually make progress. How do we get to that?
Without jumping too far ahead.
I'm sorry if I jumped.
No, 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 it's a good question.
Did I have any air slots or jumping, you know?
Oh, I'm getting the button.
And maybe I'm the only one, by the way, that has that point of view. So don't, don't waste the time, it's just my point of view.
That's why I wasn't talking to you first, like, I want to get to the good stuff.
No, what I was going to say is, we're going to be talking about the conditions that exist in high achieving districts. That survey that you all hopefully took, or will take very soon, actually will measure those conditions as they currently exist in the district. The first condition is basically everything you were talking about, the idea of, do we all agree what the job is, and is that sort of infused throughout the district? So you could ask anyone in the district, what is the goal? The goal, not necessarily the strategic plan, but you, through your work, have to sort of narrow the focus. What is it that we have to do most that's going to improve? You may find that it's improving instruction, or the interrelation between curriculum and instruction. Sometimes, well, in the broader sphere of things, what we have to kind of do is stop running school districts for the convenience of adults, and start doing it for the convenience of our children. Now, I know you've had debate about early start times, if I'm not mistaken.
Don't, we, we finished it.
John Deere, no longer a debate.
But why, why did you do that? Why do we talk about?
The health of the children.
Correct. So how many adults had to really readjust their way of thinking to make this happen? Because whoever.
Many.
But that's an example of how we do a lot of things. We do a lot of things because it's for the good of the adults, and what we have to do is refocus our energy so that the conversations are about what is it going to do for the kids, recognizing we have to change some of the cultures to make that happen. As I say, when we start to go into more depth on the conditions, some of that will become more obvious. But I, it's a good question to ask, and it's, it's germane to what we want to do, or what you want to do, so I would agree with that, that is important.
You should know that the board failed to set its own goals after doing a self-assessment in a public meeting, deferring it to this time. So I hope to God we get that done, because it's been many months since our self-assessment was completed.
I was not aware that was going to come up today.
Okay, well, background you should have.
We, we didn't, we didn't say goals.
We had goals made into our policy, through the CAPE policy, but we were looking at, those are table stakes, right? We were looking at, what is it we want to focus on this year? And there were members who felt we weren't ready to do that, so it's something that we hope to do in one of these sessions.
Or through this.
I'm, I'm trying to think about trying to start a process like that, the o'clock at night, I mean, I, I reached a point where I'm reaching a next month's meeting.
No, but I think it would be instructive, if it's okay with the chair, to provide you the data on what the board said in its self-assessment, without names attached.
I know, it's the one we publicly posted, it has no names, it's just averages.
Does he have?
We did mention that it was available, and I hope you could track that down. We can certainly send him that, send him the draft goals that we were working off of, and maybe.
I mean, we have to do that. We, the next session will, we can make shorter, so we could, right in time to do that as well, so.
Yeah, but I, I think, I think, Nick, I would, I, I want to, I, I would have hoped it was, if you've got a process, we should probably not screw up the process, because that's, maybe this is our problem right here. You're watching it, you're watching it live in a living color, as they used to say.
I will say this, that the second module, which will come up probably in the April meeting, talks about the role of the board, and when we start to talk about what the research shows boards should focus on, I think that's going to be more supportive of that conversation. So I would say, I'd love to see the material that you've got, but.
Just so everyone understands, that will mean an entire academic year has passed without board goals, and that was the decision of people in this room. I just want everyone to accept that. I, I think that's.
I never accepted that.
Well, I wanted to discuss it in a public meeting when it was first brought to us.
Right.
But if we get to that in the spring through you, that's all well, but we've lost a year.
I, I, I would say there's two ways of looking at it, because we're, we are, by the nature of this training, we may push back outside of April for, for the work. I'm wondering if having those goals sort of worked on now could include continuing this work in one way or another, you know, and articulating how you want that work to change what you do. So maybe it would be helpful, I saw what you'd had for goals.
And you can decide.
And we can talk and try to figure out, does it make sense to tie it with the next meeting, or will it make more sense to go through that? And I might move up that process, because the, the one section that I'm thinking about would do the most good for the board would normally be like a fourth session, and we can kick that up, so it might make sense to do that. But let me see those, if you could set it up, and we can figure that out from here. Because I want this to be valuable to you, I want your work, I want the work we do together to help the kids in this district. And if it's just coming in feeling nice because we're talking about good stuff, and then it doesn't change anything, you all have other things you need to do, and I would feel like failure, so we need to keep you feeling that way. I, I think we've reached a logical place to kind of call it an evening. I hate to start something new and then get caught up in it, so I want to see each other again.
January, January.
For our journal.
Make it your table, your journal.
You can do that.
That's Francis, do you want to do like the second?
Yes.
All right, all of you, favor of the journal. Peter, do you want to return, or would you like to stay online?